We do, Mr. Chair. This is a public hearing to consider the first reading of an ordinance that would amend the Clackamas County Code to add requirements establishing time, place, and manner regulations for medical marijuana dispensaries and declaring an emergency. So I'm going to ask Mr. Dan Chandler from County Administration to present to you the report. Also joining us is Nate Boderman from County Council at office.
Good morning, Commissioners. Dan Chandler, Strategic Policy Administrator. As Administrator Krup said, we're here to talk about an ordinance establishing time, place, and manner regulations for marijuana dispensaries. I want to first start with a little background. Really, the biggest reason we're here is Senate Bill 1531, which licensed or set up a licensing program for medical marijuana dispensaries. It also clarified that counties have authority to adopt reasonable time, place, and manner regulations on medical marijuana dispensaries. The statute also set up a couple of setbacks and a few restrictions on dispensaries and gave the Oregon Health Authority the ability to write further regulations. The League of Oregon Cities and Association of Oregon Counties, however, believe that cities and counties have additional authority to regulate on matters of county concern, including medical and recreational marijuana. However, the issue's not clear, the AOC and LOC have both asked the legislature to go ahead and clear that up so that we don't spend years asking the courts to clear it up for us. The other real key factor that I think has changed the landscape, of course, is the passage of Measure 91, which will legalize recreational marijuana in the state of Oregon. You can see up on the screen that there are possession limits that are fairly generous: eight ounces of usable marijuana for plants, a pound of solid homemade marijuana products, four and a half pounds of liquid homemade marijuana products. And people can possess outside of their household up to an ounce of usable marijuana. Measure 91 also sets up the ability to transfer marijuana, recreational marijuana, not for money, but to deliver to people without compensation: an ounce of homegrown marijuana, a pound of solid homemade marijuana products, and four and a half pounds of liquid homemade marijuana products. The measure prohibits consumption in public. But you can see that collectively, with the possession limits and the transfer limits, that in July of this year, I think the landscape is going to change in terms of people's ability to have marijuana in their homes, use it in their homes, and transfer it. Last spring, after the Board of Commissioners adopted a moratorium under Senate Bill 1531, they requested staff to go back and work on time, place, and manner regulations. We had the assistance of a number of folks in the public. I want to thank them. Many of them are here in the room. It was a lively discussion, ranging from sort of 30,000-foot issues about the use of medicine, marijuana discrimination, the fact that it's still illegal under federal law, but there was also some specific concerns: access to medicine on the pro-dispensary side; there was concern about forcing users to the black market if the county was too restrictive; on the prevention side, there was concern about normalization, the effect that having a number of dispensaries would have on the perception among youth that the use of marijuana was a normal, regular, and sort of permissive thing in society; there were concerns about the neighborhood effects of proliferation; there was also concern expressed about the difficulty in enforcing impaired driving prohibitions and how that might affect the time, place, and manner of medical marijuana dispensaries. I think it's also clear that many medical marijuana dispensaries, once they are allowed, will likely become recreational vendors. It's going to be difficult to close folks down next year when the OLCC writes its regulations or finishes its regulations allowing recreational dispensaries. We just think it's fair to assume that any medical dispensary will likely become a recreational vendor at the end of the day. But if you look at many of these concerns, you can see a possibility that they may be overwhelmed under Measure 91. In other words, forcing users to the black market may be unnecessary with the generous possession limits and ability to transfer under Measure 91. Normalization, depending on what happens under Measure 91, may just happen in society anyway. So many of those specific concerns, in our view, are going to be changed and maybe even rendered irrelevant by Measure 91, depending upon what happens. So we're really in a situation right now where there's substantial uncertainty. We've got two separate regulatory schemes, two separate regulatory agencies. We have OLCC rulemaking going on in recreational. We have legislative changes potentially in the works. Marijuana still remains illegal under federal law. And I want to note that, you know, non-enforcement guidance at the federal level is just that. It's a guidance. It doesn't change the statute, and that guidance can be changed. There've been some federal guidance issued about when the feds may or may not prosecute marijuana, but again, it's just guidance. I know there's at least one case, and I believe two now pending in other states, on whether or not state recreational marijuana programs are preempted or violate the federal supremacy clause because marijuana remains illegal under federal law. And I say all of that to say, there is uncertainty out there about where we're going to be in a year. That uncertainty just led Columbia County to go ahead and extend its moratorium till late August. They're relying on what they believe to be their inherent authority to go ahead and extend the moratorium. Again, it's unclear whether or not that would stand a court challenge or not, but the uncertainties led them to do that. And I think from our perspective, anyway, the staff's perspective, we know it's easier to loosen restrictions than it is to tighten them later. So I think we should look at this as an interim step, a first step, knowing that Measure 91 may change the landscape dramatically. So whatever we do this month, again, we could loosen it up if it's not loosened up for us by the legislature or the OLCC. So the ordinance in front of you chiefly deals with county setbacks between dispensaries 2,500 feet, 2,000 feet from schools, 1,500 feet from light rail transit stops, libraries, parks, treatment centers, adult foster care, 500 feet from licensed childcare facilities. There's a map. There's also a map up on the side of the room. This map is for informational purposes only. It's long experience would dictate there's probably something that we missed in terms of use that would create another circle on the maps. What you can see there in the darker magenta are the areas that facilities would be allowed with the setbacks as we know them today. You'll note a change from earlier maps on McLaughlin Boulevard. There about halfway up that county stretch of McLaughlin, there's a new area of magenta. One of the facilities shown on earlier maps has surrendered its license, and that used to be blocked out by the 2,500-foot setback. So there's another, this is not, the laser's not going to show, but you can kind of see halfway up McLaughlin there, there's a new piece of magenta that wasn't there before. Other time, place, and manner regulations that are in the ordinance, we have hours of operation 10:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. That was previously adopted by the Board in January in the ordinance that relaxed the moratorium and grandfathered certain facilities. Disposal must be secure. Filtration must combine objectionable odors to the premises, and that there's no mobile vending, drive-through, or walk-through, which is probably prohibited by the state anyway, but it seemed to make sense to put it in our ordinance. Our ordinance currently says that these facilities must be inside the metro urban growth boundary. That means they would not be allowed in the rural commercial areas or exclusive farm use zones. I would note that Measure 1531 would allow these facilities pretty much everywhere that's not forest, as far as we can tell. So they'd be allowed in EFU zones and everywhere else, under the terms of 1531. Our view is that being inside the metro UGB makes it much easier to police the impacts of these. Our code enforcement folks would have better access. And also, these urban law enforcement levels provide a better DUII or impaired driving protection for the community. The rural commercial areas that would not be allowed, you're talking about towards the villages of Mount Hood, Malino, Colton, Boring, Beaver Creek. I want to note some changes since the March 10 policy session and today. Again, the provision on mobile walk-through or drive-through vending was added since March. We've added that the rules will apply to all marijuana vending facilities, sort of in advance of what happens with recreational marijuana. Disposal must be secure. We've added a provision that says they must comply with Oregon Health Authority requirements. That seems a little redundant, but it really protects us from a situation where someone would come in and say, "Well, I comply with the county ordinance. Go ahead and let me open up." And they may not comply with the OHA. So I typically don't like those cross-jurisdictional things, but think that they're appropriate in this instance. We have also added an emergency clause that would indicate that this ordinance will become effective after second reading. So those are all changes that were made since March 10. The version that went out on the web last week had the first four of those requirements. We added the emergency clause in another version and published it earlier this week. That concludes our presentation, unless the Board has any questions.
Commissioner Savis.
So, Dan, could you help clarify and verify what I'm about to say? And that is, just addressing that when people hear that this county moratorium, they think of the county and the boundaries, but our authority or our moratorium really applies to unincorporated areas, which is about half the population, and then the other half of the population is in the jurisdiction of the cities, which are still within the county, but this moratorium has no effect. And I think that a lot of people are reading into this that somehow our moratorium would overlay the cities, which it does not. I understand that Sandy is going to be on, which is on the Highway 26 corridor, for example, will be allowing that in their industrial areas. But I think what's happened is that the messaging out there or the misunderstanding out there is that our moratorium does not affect what the cities can do, still allows the cities to be there, to employ whatever mechanisms they want, if any, and that this does not affect it in the cities. But there are that, there is that. So could you, what do you know about what some of the cities are doing?
As far as I know right now, all I've been able to tell is that Sandy, as you mentioned, Commissioner, will be allowing, I think in their industrial zones, are going to allow dispensaries and tax them. We're not sure what the other cities are doing yet. There's not a lot of information out there available on the web. But again, this ordinance does just only affects these commercial districts in Clackamas County.
And I think we have, this conundrum is by virtue, really has not been a lot of jurisdictional coordination on this effort. And I know a lot of us are relying upon the legislature and legislative actions to help determine this, but I just wanted to point that out.
Commissioner Bernard.
So this really has nothing to do with this, but I thought I would bring it up while I'm sitting here thinking about it. But when I was a kid, I used to pick black bear, I mean raspberries and strawberries. Is the state law looking at minors' processing or production involvement? I mean, you may have migrants coming from other countries or from other areas of the country. Are they looking at the age limit for picking or producing these products?
We'll find out, Commissioner. We have no idea.
Okay, thanks.
I mean, I know that's happening now with tobacco industry as well. There are a number of concerns that have been raised.
Commissioner Smith.
So regarding Measure 91, I had a town hall meeting last night, and many questions in Boring, and many questions came up about grow facilities and the agriculture zones in the county. What does this measure do? What does this measure say about that?
This ordinance?
Well, what, yes. And then further on down the line.
So this ordinance really only affects medical marijuana dispensaries. We're not addressing grow issues at all. There is a substantial amount of discussion at the state level right now about what to do with that. Some of that for Clackamas County really is going to be focusing on what happens with rural residential. We've got about 70,000 acres of rural residential, more than any other county in the state.
So what about just EFU-zoned lands? Is that permitted in EFU? Are gross facilities under Measure 91 permitted in EFU?
It looks like that's where the legislation is headed.
Okay. And how is that licensed or approved? Do we do that at the county?
Again, it's unclear right now what authority we are going to have at the end of the day, in part because it hasn't been even worked out at the state level. The legislation hasn't been worked out. They haven't really worked out yet which agencies are best suited to address the issue. In other words, the OLCC has said, "Look, we're not a land, we're not LCDC. We're not a land use agency. We'd like LCDC to address that." I don't know if they've wanted to take it yet.
The reason I bring this up, because there's so much confusion out there on the marijuana issue in general. So it was a good cross-section of my people last night at the meeting, and I had to explain to them the medical marijuana and then the recreational marijuana, and they all lump it together.
Yeah, they do.
And so why is that person being allowed to do that? And they call up and they report them. And there's a lot of concern out there of grow facilities popping up right now, when they're really getting ahead of what the law is, anticipating that it's going to be illegal and everything that they do will be legal. And I've always been a word of caution, just because Measure 91 was approved, it's not a free-for-all. The minute you legalize something, it is also highly regulated. And I keep saying that to the people who want to engage in this business. So just a word of caution, because later on, I could foresee them getting ahead, doing their grow operations, and then coming back to the county commissioners and saying, "You took away my livelihood." Well, I just think it's a mess.
Commissioner Schrader, oh, I'm sorry. Did you want to comment?
We do have a policy session scheduled, I believe, for later this month to talk about exactly those issues, you know, where we are going forward, particularly the grow issues.
Commissioner Schrader.
I just wanted to make a comment. I suspect that the other possibility is growing, it would be considered an agricultural product. So it could very well even end up under the auspice of the Department of Agriculture at the state. We just don't know.
No, we don't.
And we don't know how that's going to play out. I think it would be more likely LCDC and/or the Department of Ag if it's considered to be a, you know, plant that people grow in fields or greenhouses. So I think we just have to wait and see, get some more direction from the legislature.
Commissioner Savis.
So, you know, Dan, I think you outlined quite well the, all the uncertainty. And I think part of the angst that we have here is the uncertainty. And while the legislature's moving forward, I think the other thing that people really need to realize is that we are being approached by, our staff's being approached, elected officials are being approached, cities, business owners are being approached. They want to have a grow operation. They want to have a retail operation. With all this uncertainty, we really can't answer a lot of these questions. But I think that some people think that, "Well, you're overreacting by initiating this or that." Well, what they don't know in the background, and there's probably not a lot of people here today that are representing some of those businesses, that have approached me and saying, "I'm really worried. I have a person who wants to rent one of my buildings. What do the laws allow or disallow?" And with this uncertainty, it's really hard for us to respond, because, again, this is something that'll be later clarified with, by the legislative actions. But there's a lot more uncertainty than there is clarity, by far.
And I want to remind us all that we're here on the medical marijuana thing. I know there's a lot of conjecture and a lot of confusion, which we'll get to later in regards to 91. All right. So I had a couple of questions. Under H, it says, "Premises does not include the parking area or the landscape areas located outside of the building or buildings which accommodate the primary activities of medical marijuana facility." Then later on, in, under Section 809030, it says, again, "There should be no manufacturer production of any extracts, oils, et cetera." And then we talk about "on the premises." So I'm concerned about the premises. I thought that premises would include the property which they occupy, including the land. Further on, under G, in relationship to a minor, and I guess the state says that if they're accompanied, if an adult is accompanied by a child, then that would be okay. Again, "on the premises" would mean inside. And so the C also, marijuana and tobacco products must not be smoked, ingested, or otherwise consumed. Again, it says "on the premises," which doesn't preclude it from occurring in the parking lot. And I'm concerned about that, especially since we've established these rings around the facilities. We don't want these operations to occur within. Then I'm concerned that it doesn't preclude somebody from ingesting or otherwise smoking medical marijuana in the parking lot.
The public consumption is illegal under state law, both Measure 91 and the medical marijuana program. So that's the reason for the use of the term "premises" there. However, the setbacks are measured from the property line. That's 8.09040 sub C. So we're measuring distances from the property line, but premises mean the facility itself. And as to minors on the premises, the issue really there is not wanting children left in the car if they're accompanying the parent who is a cardholder. They cannot be in the presence of the marijuana, but they can come to the waiting area. That's what state law allows right now. So there's a sort of, you've got to go through, show your card and go through into a secure area to actually obtain the product. We wanted to make sure that children couldn't be anywhere else except that waiting area. And again, the reason to allow them in the waiting area at all, so they don't, you don't encourage people to leave the kids in the car.
So does anything preclude somebody from ingesting or otherwise smoking in their automobile still on the property where the premises are located?
That would be governed by other law. It would seem to me that that would still be public consumption.
Well, yeah, windows, right? They could be seen. The last thing, you know, you have described under, what page is this? Under H, "Home occupation of facility may not be operated as a home occupation, may not have a walk-up window, a drive-through, and may not operate from a non-fixed location." Whenever I think about non-fixed locations, I think of food carts. They're pretty fixed. A lot of times, they drop the wheels off of them and drop them there. Would something like that, that can be moved, would something like that qualify under this as a non-fixed location?
They would still have to comply, they'd have to have an OHA approval. I mean, this is really, in some senses, slightly redundant, right? The OHA has to approve a location and security and all of those sorts of things. We just wanted this there as a precautionary note, because we have fairly broad provisions and somewhat complex about mobile vending, depending on whether you're driving around all the time, how long you can park in one place, and those sorts of things. We thought, you know, why not just go ahead and clarify here once again that you can't have mobile marijuana vending? Particularly since there's the notion that some of this may continue to apply to recreational marijuana.
Right. All right. We, I think we might have some additional questions after the public testimony, but I'm going to open the public hearing and call you up and put you on deck in twos. Now, excuse me if I don't get these right. I go by printing. Todd Fulcher, Sarah Poole, followed by James Garcia, and David Schnedig. I don't know. Again, my apologies. Everybody will have three minutes. And, you know, considering we've got quite a few cards, I'd like you to really try to confine it within that time. Thank you.
Good morning. Thank you to the council for hearing us out. My name is Sarah Poole. My address is 7105 Southeast Overland Street here in Milwaukee. I am a Clackamas County resident. I also work at a dispensary currently. I work at a dispensary that has no plans on ever going to a recreational facility. So I'd like to, first of all, address the assumption that all of the facilities would like to go recreational. That's simply not true. The second thing I'd like to address is that, as a former Food Policy Council member, somebody who's sat on zoning, reconfiguring laws, somebody who's always been a civic member of our society and our county, it's really important for all of us to be able to participate in our communities. And one of the ways that we can best do that is to financially, economically, and medically support our communities. About two years ago, I had approached my friend Todd here about moving a facility up to Rhododendron, up to the mountain, to combine my love of being outdoors with also my passion of bringing quality medicine to the residents there. And since that time, we've had quite an outcry of people who have currently no outlet, no way to buy their medicine. The reason that it's important for them to go to dispensaries is because they can obtain products that are not available currently on the black market: products that are high in CBDs, low in THCs, products that are specifically targeted to help cancer patients, leukemia patients, epilepsy patients, et cetera. These products are not available currently on the black market. The only place to get them is at a dispensary with a medical marijuana card. As, because I'm personally a medical marijuana patient, I can see the benefits every day of these types of medicines, and I can also testify that these people are not going to be able to get that quality on the black market and are not also going to be able to drive beyond 10 miles in order to obtain this medicine. If people have to drive further than 10 miles, they are going to have to resort, once again, to the black market. And I think that's something that we, as voters, personally voted to try and limit, which is why we voted yes on these proposals. And as our representatives, it's kind of disappointing that you would decide to go against the wishes of your constituents. I see so many real patients with so many real products in my dispensary that turning these people to the black market would disservice them, and it would disservice the communities that are outside of your urban growth boundary. I also think personally that your restrictions go extremely far beyond what is considered reasonable restrictions for the time, place, and manner restrictions, and that's pretty obvious by the fact that you're so far extreme over anyone else. Thank you.
I just want to remind everybody, as they're coming and going, if you could use the back door. Because of our microphones, they pick up a lot of noise, and those center doors are very loud. So if you could do that, we'd greatly appreciate that. Yes, sir.
Good morning. My name is Todd Fulcher. I live part-time in Rhododendron, Oregon. My address is 26597 East Henry Creek Road. Coming from a slightly different angle on this, I'd just like to explain to you what's been going on with us for the last year. Sarah had approached me about a year ago with an idea for a medical dispensary in my town. I had been searching for a business opportunity on the mountain, and though hesitant, was soon convinced by her dual passion for this medicine in the mountain, that we ended up purchasing a failing antique store in Rhododendron. And after much work last year, we're granted a license to operate a medical dispensary by the state. We were getting ready to hire a contractor from Sandy, several tradesmen from the local area. We were getting ready to hire several employees, and we're going to use local growers and businesses to help stock our store. We applied for a building permit in January 2015, and we were denied that permit in March because our location sits outside the urban growth boundary. I have lived part-time in Rhododendron for three years, and I have watched the slow march of progression on our main drag, and I think our opening would contribute to that forward march and help local businesses and residents. We are in a commercial area with no schools nearby, and our location exceeds all the parameters of your new rules in all ways but one. I understand that the committee does not want a proliferation of dispensaries in rural areas, but there must be a middle ground so that a limited number can open and serve their communities. They've done this with much success in Colorado with some of their rural communities there. I ask the committee to consider allowing those of us who are licensed by the state to be allowed to open, so people in outer Clackamas have access to safe and legal medicine. Thank you.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, when you come forward, you do not have to give your full address, just the city you come from, because we will have that information on our blue card. So it is James Garcia, and David, you'll have to pronounce that for me, David, and followed by Randy Rappaport and Aaron Purchase. Either one of you.
Hi. I'm James, and I'm a medical marijuana patient, and I take marijuana for pain and muscle spasms. And I live in Rhododendron. I do not drive, so it's very difficult for me to get my medicine. I have to take three different buses, and I have to ride the MAX just to get my medicine. It'd be nice if it was a little bit closer in Rhodey, because I have to wait till I get home to medicate, and it's just a little bit out there. And, yeah, I just, I benefit from medical marijuana, and it helps me in a multitude of ways, including high anxiety in front of people and muscle spasms. And I don't know where I would be without medical marijuana, and I just was wondering. I was here to try and get a dispensary put in Rhodey, so I didn't have to go so far to get my medicine. get my medicine.
Thank you. Yes, sir?
I'm David Schneddig. I'm a resident of Welch's, Oregon. I'm a homeowner. I have three children, and I've used marijuana and continue to use marijuana for similar, similar medical reasons. I'm a chef. I've been a chef for twenty-one years, since I was fourteen years old. I'm now thirty-five. It's what I do. There's a lot of heavy lifting, turning, there's long hours, there's weird hours. So, in order to support my family, in order to get through my day, I do not consume marijuana before I go to work. I find it difficult to multitask and do my job. However, when I get home, my back is destroyed. I can't get up off the couch unless I consume a very small amount, and I'm not talking get completely stoned to where you're not functional, I'm talking a small amount, such as somebody taking a little bit of ibuprofen or something like that to relieve their back pain. I've had times where my back spazzes out and I can't sleep. I have to sleep upright, and possibly many of you also have experienced something similar as, as we approach our older age, that parts of our bodies don't work the same anymore. I find with marijuana, topically, and in the way of topical rub in the salve, or orally in terms of ingestible glycerin, also by smoking or vaporizing, that it reduces the symptoms of these pains and the inflammation, which allows me to get up for work the next day, get a full night's rest, earn my income, make my payments, and support my family. Currently, as, you know, the last three speakers have said, that in order to obtain medical marijuana legally on Mount Hood, it's about an hour drive each way to go all the way into parts of Portland, or Gresham, Far Gresham, Milwaukee. A lot of these strains that you're able to get on the black market are not tested most of the time. There may be molds, there may be different sorts of things that can ultimately get somebody sick and not do what they're supposed to do, which is prevent cancer, things like that. As James said, the round trip, if you're not a driver, can be really time-consuming. So somebody with severe chronic pain, you know, there's patients on the mountain that are elderly patients with rheumatoid arthritis that are incapable of functioning without of it, without using the medicine. These people are not able to get down to the city regularly and obtain these high CBD strains that relieve their symptoms. There's cancer patients on the mountain, there's people that don't drive of all ages, you know? It is a difficult financial area. There are limited jobs, there's low property tax, you know, there's a lot, not a lot of money for that area of the county, as it seems, but I guess I'm over my time, so.
Oh, thank you. Commissioner Bernard?
Well, you, one of your comments was that smoking marijuana prevents cancer? Is that what you said? You did say that?
I did say that, yes.
It does prevent cancer?
Well, as far as the research and the studies that I've read, and albeit, you know, on paper, on the internet, a lot of the studies that are coming out now prove that THC and different CBDs can actually attack, attack cancer cells, where they go in and break these cancer cells down and eliminate them completely. So, I'm not sure that smoking, of course, for anybody is bad. You know, there are carcinogens in smoke, however vaporizing it and reducing the carcinogens or orally ingesting it has proven to eliminate cancer, destroy cancer. I know people that have killed skin cancer with topical-
So it doesn't prevent cancer? It's a treatment for cancer?
It's a treatment for cancer, yes. I mean, blueberries are also a treatment, but they also, you know, defend it at the same time.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you both. Randy Rappaport, and Aaron Purchase, followed by Shirley Morgan, and Mike Mullins.
We need to do a call. Do you want to come first, or me?
Either one of you.
Hi. My name is Aaron Purchase. I'm from Oregon City. I am hoping to present my story to you guys to maybe change the way that you're looking at cannabis as you go forth in making these rules. In two thousand and twelve, my seven-year-old daughter was diagnosed with acute lymphoblastic leukemia. It had metastasized to her brain and spinal column, and her condition was very severe. We immediately started her on chemotherapy, but every time the doctors administered it and would wait till the next week, the cancer count would go back up. I was already an activist and working with several patients that had cancer, and I knew about cannabis oil. So I immediately got my daughter on the Oregon Medical Marijuana Program in July of two thousand and twelve, ten days after she was diagnosed with leukemia. The day before, I gave her high THC cannabis oil. I was told by the oncologist that we would probably be going to transplant because she was a slow responder. She would also need full body radiation and brain radiation because of the cancer in her brain. I gave her that oil on Tuesday, July twenty-fourth, and seven days later, the cancer was gone. I know, I did not have to radiate my child's brain. I did not have to give her a bone marrow transplant. Not only that, she went through twenty-eight months of intensive chemotherapy of six to eight drugs that made her very ill, but she was not as ill as any other children at Randall Children's Hospital here in Portland, Oregon. She did not take a single Tylenol, where most children take oxycodone and morphine. She did not lose a single pound when most children are walking through the halls with a feeding tube in their nose. My child was able to eat. My child was able to thrive. Most children spend the majority of their first year hospitalized. My daughter spent fourteen days in the entire two years of treatment. That saved the state of Oregon a lot of money. Not only that, I replaced five commonly-used prescribed medications with cannabis oil alone. My daughter is now done with treatments. She finished, finished in October of two thousand and fifteen. She's a third grader at Gaffney Lane Elementary School, doing phenomenal. Without cannabis, I don't think my daughter would be here today. And safe access is extremely important, not because of CBD, because my daughter, CBD's important, THC's important, this plant's important. My daughter took high THC, and what's important about a dispensary is that dispensaries are required by law to test their products and provide safe products to the patient. And instead of banning these facilities and imposing strict rules because you think that these people are horrible people, and being so strict on children and away from schools, the only reason my daughter's in school today, I think, is because of this plant. What's important is teaching our children the truth, maybe developing a campaign effort, teaching them the truth about this plant. Thank you.
Commissioner Sathas?
Just want to say, you're aware that we lifted the moratorium on a few of the pre-established facility, medical marijuana-
I'm aware of that, but I advocate for several patients, and I know that there are patients under this ban that are being affected, and that's, that's several families. There, there are two hundred minor children on the Oregon Medical Marijuana Program. That's just children, there's a lot of adults.
I just, my, my point was that just down the street in, in the McLaughlin area, just north of Oregon City is, you can, today, buy medical marijuana today. You're aware of that?
Yes, but the people up on the mountain cannot.
Well, we, we heard about Sandy, and that's nineteen miles from Rhododendron. Commissioner Schrader?
Yeah, I just say, we're all sympathetic to marijuana as a medical use, that's not the issue. What we're really dealing with here, that, that, that's been established, it's been in law now. What, what we have to do as local officials is to figure out the zoning issues. And there really isn't any business in this county that isn't subject to zoning rules. So that's really what we're grappling with. It's not really trying to limit access, it's trying to figure out where these things land-
Please don't interrupt, Commissioner.
Because, I mean, being, quite frankly, you know, you don't want to have, we've got an industrial area down two twelfth corridor, and you probably wouldn't want to be next to Pacific Seafood or Warren Winches. That's why they're there. So we're just trying to figure this out. So, so I, I, I hope that people understand, we are here to follow the law, we're really looking at this from a land use perspective at this point. And, you know, the people have spoken, and we're just trying to see the best way to cite something the way we cite anything else in this county that is a business, and, and so that's, just clarify that, it really, it's really land use as opposed to anything else at this point, so.
All right. Yes, sir?
Hello there, commissioners. My name's Randy Rappaport. I live in Portland and also have a home in the mountain community of Rhododendron, where I spend several days a week. I have written my notes, so.
Scoot that microphone as close as you can to yourself, will you? I can barely hear you.
Balanced solutions for reasonable and safe access and business development should be available for the mountain areas located far outside of the urban growth boundary. My business partners and I each own homes on the mountain, and have, each have members of our households who are OMMP cardholders, who use the medication to medicate chronic pain. Safe access is needed at the eastern half of the county. It is a hardship for patients who may not have reasonable access otherwise. Not everybody has a car available to drive, and sometimes it can be dangerous to drive in that part of the county. From a business and job creation perspective, by the way, I'm a partner in the, with Todd Fulcher, in the Rhododendron licensed facility. From a business and a job creation perspective, we have been licensed by the Oregon Health Authority to open a facility in Rhododendron in a commercial zone, and have plans to invest further in the community. This would mean the creation of several full-time jobs, and I understand from looking at Commissioner Ludlow's website, that business development and job creation is an important part of, of your vision. We would like the right to do business outside of the metro urban growth boundary to serve the mountain villages who need safe access. We are located more than two miles from the nearest OLCC liquor store, as well as the schools. Regarding, regarding geographic limitations, I have a few recommendations for solutions, because we want to be solution-oriented to allowing safe access for people who have medical marijuana cards and need the medication.
Go ahead and finish your sentence.
Thank you. I, a solution could be a fifteen-mile buffer outside of the metro UGB boundary, or a limitation of the number of licensed facilities that are already, have been licensed for a grandfathering. So, you know, I'm, I'm asking for either a buffer or a limitation, and that would allow people with, with, with needs to have safe access. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So it is Shirley Morgan, and Mike Mullins, followed by Matt Walstatur, and from Happy Valley, it's Jennifer Valley. Either one of you.
Well, good morning, commissioners. My name is Shirley Morgan. I'm from Welch's. Though I have compassion for those wanting to develop a business theory they believe in, and empathy for those wanting an alternative medicine, marijuana dispensaries do not hold to the same standards as the rest of the businesses in the county, because they do not abide by federal law, and marijuana has never been approved by the FDA. Simply put, there are threats to our public safety, quality of life, and property values. Many of these businesses operate by cash. My dentist office on one hundred and twenty-second has a marijuana dispensary down the street that has already had an armed robbery, and two weeks later, their office was burglarized. There are also over forty-six thousand five hundred and seventy registered marijuana growers in Oregon, who grow for cardholders and supply dispensaries in Clackamas County. Three thousand four hundred and forty-eight of those growers, which are unregulated and undefined, are in Clackamas County. There are over seven hundred and forty-two growers from Damascus to Government Camp, five hundred and fourteen in Oregon City, three hundred and seventy-two in Milwaukee, many of which are attracting in-home invasions, armed robberies, fires, and hash oil explosions. A small business owner on Powell Boulevard who teaches piano lessons to kids had a marijuana dispensary open next door, and complained of the smell of marijuana and public consumption. Within days, parents were asking him about this and said they would no longer be bringing their children to this facility. He had two options, move, which is costly, or close the door. A second example is in Holiday Inn in Frisco, Colorado. Without notice, a marijuana dispensary moved in across the street with plans to not only sell, but to manufacture close by as well. Within weeks, the Holiday Inn was getting cancellation letters from parents and ski team leaders that they would no longer be bringing their kids to that facility. The Holiday Inn has filed a federal RICO, racketeer-influenced and corrupt organizations act lawsuit against the dispensary, the property owner, the contractor who, after being served, has ceased all work, the electrician, and Bank of the West, who, after being served, has closed all accounts. Although I cannot support this ordinance, because I believe these facilities are a form of corrupt legality, and should have been banned under federal law, I do commend the staff and the commissioners for creating time, manner, and place regulations that are reflective of some of my concerns. Thank you, and I'm happy to take any questions the commissioners might have.
Thank you, Shirley.
Thank you.
Yes, sir?
Hi. My name is Mike Mullins from Happy Valley. I'm a lifetime resident and business owner. I've graduated with honors from Clackamas schools. I'm sixty-two years old and very active in politics recently. I'm sure a number of you have seen me at your fundraisers. I'm fortunate to have been on the study session for the time, place, and manner. Today, I'd like to talk about the immediate future of economics for our county. As we face huge deficits and we have taxed everything we can, we have problems with our budgets and our roads. I see that you have a town hall meeting entitled "Growing a Vibrant Economy" on April twenty-first." A little plug for you there, and I will be there, because I believe that we should be embracing this new industry for many reasons. First of all, cannabis is not going away. It's being implemented in Oregon. There has been a medical marijuana program in Oregon for over fifteen years. This is nothing new, something we should have looked at sooner than this. It is, in fact, the fastest-growing business in the world, as recorded by Harvard Educational We believe that there will be interstate and international trade within the next few years. In fact, I've already provided an implementation, a five-year implementation plan to your healthcare providers, which they're going to start as early as July first. So, yes, it is going to be happening through the federal level. By passing this ordinance, you are banning or otherwise stopping me from my dreams and plans of operating a business in the county that I love and live in. I'm concerned that if the commission lacks the vision to usher in a new stream of income and a new industry, then how do you handle more important matters such as the Eagle Landings project or the repair of our roads? We need to have the vision in our leadership to move this county into the future. And I would like to also make a statement in regards to some of the things such as normalization. It is very imperative that the county develop public education awareness for our youth, not just throw it off to the side and under the carpet and expect things to just be good because we can ban them. My hat's off to Sandy, because they have embraced this. As an industry leader, I can tell you that we would very much know that we, we need the time, place, and manner, but in a regulated, not in such a dramatic way as you have done it to put us out of business. My hat's are off to Sandy, because they have a conditional use permit, which we have suggested to Clackamas County. They're make, going to be making money off of this new industry and being able to put that to work in their county. Thank you very much.
Thank you. So, it is Jennifer Valley from Happy Valley. Matt Walstatur, you'll have to correct me, Matt, sorry.
John, or Chair Ludlow, members of the commission, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'd like to say that Clackamas County- I'd like to say that Clackamas County has been a high-intensity drug trafficking area for a very long time now, and the fact that you get federal dollars because you are a high-intensity drug trafficking area means you know you have a drug dealer problem. Allowing legal commerce is exactly what you need to put those drug dealers out of business. But the fact that you've decided to give them 2,500-foot setbacks from this, that, and the other thing shows that you like them and you want to keep them, and you don't want to infringe on their business, and I think it's entirely inappropriate. I think it's also important that you be aware that federal law is changing very quickly. The Cromnibus Bill passed December 18th no longer funds funding for marijuana eradication in states that have medical marijuana laws. That means ours. There's also a bill in the Senate and in the House that will recognize medical marijuana in all of the states. So, things are changing very quickly. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, Chair Ludlow, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Matt Walstater. I live in Portland, Oregon. My wife Megan and I are medical marijuana growers. We own a dispensary called Pure Green in Portland, and we hope to open a dispensary in Clackamas County eventually as well. I think you guys have a huge challenge here, as all local and local governments and the state of Oregon as well, in taking this industry and moving it from the shadows, from the black market, to become a legal legitimate industry. And we are really excited to be able to participate in that process. There's some facts that we're all kind of stuck with, you know? This is an important medicine, and patients need access to it. We've also legalized it for recreational purposes. And so now the challenge is, how do we build a system that meets the needs of all the stakeholders involved, including the patients, the consumers, the business owners, the, you know, the public, the county government, and does it in a way that ends the black market? We are a very heavily regulated industry at the state level right now, at least on the dispensary side, and that will be the same on the grow side as well. We are compliant in every way. We don't have issues with minors purchasing from us or consuming. We don't have any issues with public consumption. In fact, we take great pains to make sure that we follow all of these rules. Our products are safe. They're all lab-tested for purity as well as for potency. And there's a lot of evidence that dispensaries actually make neighborhoods safer. 2011 Rand Corporation study, also a study by the University of Denver, found that when dispensaries move into neighborhoods, crime goes down. And I'd be happy to provide more information on those studies and others that show exactly that. There are more security. We have cameras. There are more eyes on the street. People pay more attention when dispensaries come, and many neighborhoods have seen benefits to that. And we also create living wage jobs. We currently have 10 employees. We'll have more soon. And we pay our taxes, something that every county needs. Contrast this with the black market, because the option is not any longer marijuana or no marijuana. The option is the black market or a legitimate legal industry. You know, it's a great soundbite, but drug dealers don't check IDs, and that's true. We do. Drug dealers don't pay taxes. We do. So, again, I urge you to think about this transition from the black market to a legitimate industry. Identify the members of the industry that are willing to work with you and to be compliant and to run safe legitimate businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Savis.
I do have a question for you, Matt, and that is, you mentioned you retail in Portland today, medical marijuana. So what's your opinion on the outlook for the recreational piece as far as competition or the black market? What's your viewpoint on that?
Well, first of all, we're really excited about Measure 91 and the chance to enter the recreational market. We think that there are a lot of choices that need to be made in the implementation process, and those choices are going to govern how this all plays out. But I believe that we're on the right track in the state of Oregon. I think that we have the opportunity to really eliminate the black market altogether over time. I think that we have House Bill 3400 and Senate Bill 936, which are both, they'll probably be reconciled between the two, but what they do is they co-locate medical and recreational stores. So what that does is it gives us the ability to serve both populations, the medical patients and the recreational customers. It enables us to do that efficiently and to make sure that we have adequate supplies.
Okay, I'm going to ask you, I mean, I appreciate the answer, and we're getting a little off-subject here. We're talking about medical, and I appreciate you trying to answer the Commissioner's question, but probably, time's up.
Alright, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone else has or to, you know, speak privately about any of these matters. Thank you.
Thank you. You're a good speaker, and many of you have been. And finally, it is Tracy Anderson.
Hi, my name is Tracy Anderson. I own a restaurant bar up in Rhododendron zigzag area called the Skyway Bar and Grill. Really nervous. We've been in business for 15 years now, and it's been a real big challenge in that area because of the economy in our area and statewide, of course, and the weather. I, yes, especially this year. My husband and I definitely want any responsible businesses in our area, especially if they're going to be employing people, supporting the local economy, and we also, you know, definitely want to support safe medicine to our friends and family. My mom just recently had cancer, and she unfortunately didn't feel safe with the marijuana just because it's so controversial right now. I want to get to a point where she feels safe with, you know, going down to a dispensary rather than going down to the pharmacy, which I think is also a valid place. We have a pharmacy now, let's please have a dispensary where people know exactly what they're getting. The black market has been talked about a lot, and people are going to the black market. And if we have a place where marijuana is being tested, THC, I don't know how to put it into terms properly, but if this medicine is being tested and found safe, then let's get it to our local people and not make them drive to Sandy, which is a 40-mile round trip. If you're sick, that's a very, very long drive. So, again, my name is Tracy. I own a restaurant up in Rhododendron called the Skyway Bar and Grill, and we definitely support this. Thank you for your time.
Well, I should say that you support this, but understanding that it will not allow for the opening in Rhododendron. So you may have meant that you actually opposed this unless it was changed to allow it in more of the rural areas. Is that what you meant?
I definitely support that we allow the dispensary to open in Rhododendron. Thank you for clarifying that for me.
Yeah, thank you. Alright, I'm going to close the public hearing, and let me grab my script here. It's buried. Alright, so entertain the motion. Commissioner Bernard?
So, there's a couple of things before I make a motion, or anyone makes a motion. I think the argument that, you know, it's 19 miles to the nearest facility is not what we know. It's not true. Sandy allows it, right?
That's 19 miles. That's 19 miles.
Okay, okay, so I need a car. There's a great bus line.
Yeah, there's the bus line, yeah.
So, so there's a great bus line that could allow people.
Folks, we can't allow shout-outs from the audience. Please, I'd appreciate it. Thank you. Yes, Jim?
The other thing that really drives me crazy is that, you know, it's tax revenue. I mean, we tax everything, and it, I don't know of a tax we have that actually pays for the, what it causes. Alcohol tax, I mean, it does not, it creates opportunity to get more alcohol, but it doesn't pay for the treatment costs, the arrests, the jails, all those other things. It's also true with marijuana. We don't know the impact statewide, so whether we collect a tax or not is not going to solve the problem that will be created by legalizing marijuana. But that's outside the subject. I, you know, I guess that for me, outside the urban growth boundary, isn't a big issue. I'm more concerned that if we don't address it now, somebody else may address it. And that if we said something like, within seven miles of the urban growth boundary, then that might address some of those things. Because of our restrictions around how close they are to all those, you know, schools and childcare facilities, I think we should say something like seven miles, which would prevent it from, let's say I'm going to go up to Government Camp and pull over there and ski all day and now stop for marijuana and drive down the mountain the rest of the way. I think it reduces that a little bit, certainly during one of the, I mean, through one of the most dangerous areas. So, I would hope that the Commission might consider within seven miles of the urban growth boundary. But I will support a motion to move this forward.
Alright, is there a motion? Let's get it on the floor and talk about it. Oh, sorry. Oh, wait, it was my error here. I would ask for a motion to read, well, let's read there, folks, to read the ordinance by title only.
So I move, we read the ordinance by title only.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, the motion's been made by Commissioner Bernard, second by Commissioner Savis, to read the ordinance by title only. I'll ask the clerk to call. Do you want to discuss that, Dootie, or you want to wait on that?
I'll wait.
Okay, so I think we're ready for the poll. I'll ask the clerk to call the poll.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes 5-0. I'll ask the clerk to assign a number and read the ordinance by title only.
Okay, this is going to be ordinance number 04-2015, and ordinance amending the Clackamas County Code to add Chapter 8.09, establishing time, place, and manner regulations for medical marijuana dispensaries and declaring an emergency.
Commissioner Smith?
I think that, Jim, I appreciate what you're trying to do here. I'm not ready to move on that because we haven't studied the implications yet. My question for anybody who would want to do this, why would we give special consideration to marijuana when we don't to other businesses? I think it's discriminatory. We're just going to say, okay, because it's marijuana, they're special, they get a business in a location where nobody else does. So that's the issue I have. There's a fairness issue, and this board hasn't discussed that yet. Whereas the folks, most of the folks in this room are huge supporters of marijuana, there is that many more folks out there who do not support this and don't like what we're doing today, just so you know that. Nobody's going to be happy. There's a lady in the room here today who's been very vocal and an advocate against marijuana, and she doesn't want us to do it today for another reason. So, I think any more technical changes to what we're doing today is going to have to take a lot more time and thought and staff time, and I don't know that we have that. I think we need to wait and see what the legislature does on a whole host of things, even though the legislature is dealing with recreational marijuana. Medical marijuana facilities will be affected, as gone by testimony that we heard today. So I think that we'll just, my thing is, we just need to pass this. See where it falls. I also think that legislatures for many years to come will be dealing with this issue and tweaking the law. So it's not going to be the last time that there's going to be fixes or amendments made to what we're doing today.
Commissioner Bernard?
So, just for arguments.
Yeah.
Government can, I mean, Rhododendron, what business would we not allow there?
Well, if you're extending the urban growth boundary, anybody wanted to apply.
Well, I think we're talking about zoning.
Yeah, we're zoning.
Light manufacturing in certain areas aren't allowed, heavy manufacturing.
Well, that's true all over, and this is not zoned any different than a commercial zone anywhere else that I know of. So, I mean, I don't know that, that, you know, actually, we're restricting this more than anything else we restrict. And saying that we're giving them special ability to go to somebody else is not really true, because we are really restricting this more than anything else we do. And not that I disagree with that, but, you know, I have some concerns that, like I said, I don't agree with the argument that I have to drive all these miles to get my medical supplies, but I think that, you know, in some way, we're, we know we're all prejudiced towards this issue, because we have concerns that have not, will not be addressed no matter what happens. But I think that we have to think of it as any other business, because the voters said we should.
Just to clarify, actually, it's the legislature that made medical marijuana facilities available in the state of Oregon. The voters, that was on recreational. Commissioner Savis?
Well, it's important to point out that the second reading of this ordinance will be on April 16th, so we're not actually making a decision here today. We're just, this is part of the hearing process, in which we have the time to study this a little bit further and learn how far along some of the other rural cities are. And I think there's also, there's a temporary element of this moratorium, or what we're passing here today, in that we are, we're waiting for the legislature, I was pointing out earlier. So, as staff, Mr. Chandler pointed out earlier, which I believe is correct, we can easily relax a lot of our standards based on what the legislative action is. So this is more of a, somewhat of a placeholder, in essence, until the legislature makes a call. And it may be that this might be all for naught, that it might be moot. So, we'll see how, what the legislature acts. I do know, my understanding is that there are medical marijuana grow permits out there. How many people actually grow in the audience? Okay? And some of you live in Rhododendron, so in a way, you know, that need is being satisfied. What we're doing today does not make that illegal, so it's perfectly legal within the constraints of the law, spelled out today by virtue of SB 1531, that you can do that. So, that is available to you today. And I imagine that there's other people that are, that grow up in the mountain that have a permit as well. So, having that said, I will look forward to April 16th, and I will probably make a couple of phone calls to some of you that have spoke today that left your phone numbers. So, thank you.
Commissioner Schrader?
I want to thank you, Commissioner, for pointing that out, because that's pretty much what I was going to point out, that this is the first reading of an ordinance. As I said, I see it as grappling with a land use issue at this point and zoning issues. So, this is not the last word. We have time between now and then if we wanted to continue a conversation to address some of this, because we are still able to amend on April 16th, should we deem. Whether or not we will is a totally another conversation, but, 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 we do want to listen to the public. But I have one question for, a legal question here, because this has always puzzled me. Is the reason why our pharmacies can't dispense this is because it's illegal at the federal level? Because that's what I've always grappled with, because it does, I do believe that, you know, certainly it seems true that there are medicinal uses for marijuana, but when I take the medications I have, they're regulated, they go through an FDA process, am I correct? There's standards, there's, you know, you have pharmaceutical companies that develop this and other entities, and I just puzzle as to why, why we can't, and that, am I correct in assuming it's because it's still illegal at the federal level?
That's correct. It's still a class one, class one controlled substance. I think drug, I believe that there is synthetic THC, there are some related drugs that have been approved, but not marijuana at the federal level.
So if that changes at the federal level, then we would probably have a whole other regulatory scheme, you know, framework whereby it would become a substance that is prescribed by physicians for specific issues. So, but I don't know where that is or if that's even happening at the federal level at this point, so. happening at the federal level at this point, so.
Let me, come on, you guys. Let's hang in here.
I'll stay.
The, in a moment, I'll ask if the commissioners want to propose any changes or amendments, but I want to clarify something first with our legal staff. This is the first reading. There's going to be two. We can certainly amend it now, but this is being declared an emergency. So, you know, we talk about the words substantive changes. So, what kind of changes can be made at the, I think it's an evening meeting?
Yeah.
An evening meeting. And I might inform everybody, because of commission duties, two of us will be gone on that meeting. So, it'll only be three commissioners here. But describe to us, first of all, what changes can be made in this meeting, which I understand are quite a few. But on the second meeting, how many changes are, do they have to be substantive or what?
Commissioners, if the ordinance differs substantially from that which is posted in notice, then you would either have to have a third reading of it, which would be 13 days apart, or you would read the text in its entirety, the body of the changes, as opposed to just by title only. You read the text in its entirety of the changed portions, and that would comply with the amendment process. You would not need a third reading.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
What substantive mean?
Well...
It depends. If you were to say, for example, today, if you were to say from 2,000 feet to 2,005 feet, that's not, differ substantially. If you were to say we're going to make it separations from gas stations and restaurants and things along those lines, and it would change the map that the staff has presented to you, that would differ substantially. If you were to modify the UGB restriction, I would say that would differ substantially.
And the second question I have is, what if? What if this county doesn't pass anything by that deadline? What happens then to Clackamas County in regards to medical outlets?
The ordinance, the moratorium ordinance expires on May 1. What that would mean would be that as retail uses, they could be located anywhere else in the county. One could locate a retail use.
Okay. I just want to clarify that because we have taken a lot of time with this, and some would think we're, we're kind of at 11:59 PM here in a lot of ways. We've done that, to a large part, to try to engage with all parties involved in this, including outlet stores or people, owners who wanted to own that, and arrive at a fair and time, place, and manner. But if this doesn't pass in time, I would say, in my opinion, that's a huge failure, failure on our part to at least semi-restrict. I want to remind everybody too, that nothing, as Commissioner Savis said, is permanent forever. I think it'll be very interesting to see what kind of difficulties arise, or not, out of the medical marijuana facilities that would be allowed under this ordinance. Commissioner Bernard?
So, what we do at this point is that we're not, we could make a motion to amend.
Correct.
And if we don't, then we just set a date. That's all. There isn't any other motions today.
No.
If, that is true. There, you can make a motion, from what I understand from what Mr. Matcor said, at the next meeting. But any changes made cannot be substantial. Is that correct, Mr. Matcor?
The term of art in the statute, Chair, is differs substantially. But you can, again, you can remedy that during the second meeting if you were to read the changes in full. So, if you were to be striking provisions, it would be a short read, and it wouldn't be too cumbersome. Typically, though, we read by title only for efficiency and expediency sake.
But because we voted this right now...
No, we only voted to read it by title only.
Well, that's all we're voting on today.
Yeah, we are not voting on the ordinance itself.
So, let's say I made another motion right now to change something.
Yeah.
It's a substantial change, so we would have to read the ti, read it in full, right?
I'm going to play a scenario for you, okay? You are going to say, how about we change the UGB restriction, and your colleagues would agree with you. This group would come back on the 16th, I believe is the date. They would come back on the 16th with an ordinance which would have stricken from it the UGB restriction. At that time, if you wanted to do it at that date in an emergency, you would read the section which is going to be...
Altered.
Section...
So, we have to make it?
Sorry.
Actually, I understand.
You'd read just the section right there as to where these things are allowed into the record in its entirety, not the whole ordinance. And then if the group were to approve by three votes, then it would be effective immediately upon passage without a third reading.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just say something?
Commissioner Savis, Commissioner Smith?
Smith, thank you, folks. We already voted. I'm due in Salem to testify on another bill, so I'm going to have to leave. But I trust this is in good hands. Thank you very much.
I want to announce that there'll be a second reading, and that will be on April 16th, an evening business meeting, and it starts at 6:00 PM.